Thank you, Michael, for your support and Jatana and Iona. Let's do it again. Thanks.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, seeking your presence as we begin this meeting. We thank you for the opportunity to serve and represent the people of this great county, and we ask for your continued guidance as we move through these times of decision-making and leadership. Lord, give us the clarity of thought and vision to make decisions that reflect the best interest of our community. May we lead with humility, compassion, and courage, keeping in mind the needs and hopes of every person we represent. We ask that you bless this meeting, our conversations, and the work ahead. May our efforts contribute to a future filled with hope, peace, and prosperity for all. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Clanton and Officer Canturle. Our meeting is now officially called to order, and at the top of this meeting, we do have two presentations. The first one is to receive or present a donation to the Cobb County Senior Services Meals on Wheels program. For those who are here as a part of this presentation, please come to the front and meet your commissioner.
Thank you for joining me tonight, and it's a great pleasure that we get to present a check for our second annual Battle of the Paddles fundraiser. This was created to help support our senior services Meals on Wheels. This year, we added a little bit of a twist to it, and we had all of our departments participate, which was a lot of fun, getting to know people that we don't usually see. And congratulations to Parks and Recs. They won the gold and silver division, so congratulations, and we look forward to next year. So with that, I'd like to present a check for $6,127 that we raised. Thank you. To our Cobb County Senior Services. And I'd like to, I'm not sure who's going to speak on Meals on Wheels. Where's the paddle?
Well, I just first wanted to say thank you to you. This is our second annual event, and really, it was Commissioner Gambrell's idea to do that, and we really appreciate that all the proceeds are really going to a very good cause, which is Senior Services Meals on Wheels. But I will pass the microphone to Jobsy Alexandra. She is our Division Director for Human Services, and she will tell you more about Meals on Wheels.
So with the funds that we collected, we are excited to serve 51 seniors for one month. So that's what, that's the impact that you had helped us make. Seniors are already a vulnerable population, especially with increased prescription costs and inability to get to the stores as much. So it really is a helping hand for them to get a healthy meal to their homes delivered. Last year, Meals on Wheels was able to deliver 63,000 meals to different residences in Cobb County, and we have 343 clients on our waiting list right now. So I just wanted to let you know, as holiday seasons are coming, if you are looking for someone to support, we are looking forward to any support that we can get, continue to get.
Good evening, Michael Brantley. I'm the Director of Parks. We enjoyed putting this tournament on with Senior Services, with our partners at Senior Services. We had 22 teams from the, from the county that played, and each one of those teams had to raise a minimum amount of money to go towards this $6,000, and we really, really appreciate that. I did want to say that Parks did win. The, I don't know if that was announced, but Parks did win. Did, did we mention that Parks actually won this event? So I did want to present our trophy to Trevio Chambers and Alice Rine. Trevio, Trevio's our Recreation Coordinator at Fair Oaks Recreation Center, and Alice, who is our Tennis Coordinator at Harrison Tennis Center, and was also SEC Player of the Year at Georgia in tennis. So I'm not sure how they won the pickleball tournament, but they were, they were very good. So it was, it was a great event, great event, and we appreciated being a part of it.
Again, thank you, Michael, for your support, and Jatana and Iona. Let's do it again. Thanks.
Michael, who won the tournament?
Very good. We now have our second proclamation. For those who are here as part of Filipino-American History Month, please join me up front. It's good to see the crowd today keep growing and growing every time we do this. Well, whereas across the nation, state, and county, Filipino-American History Month is being commemorated this October. Struggle, resistance, solidarity, and resilience is the scene that marks the anniversary of the first recorded presence of Filipinos in America. And whereas the earliest documented Filipinos arriving in the continental United States occurred on October 18th, 1587, when the Spanish brought them from the region of Luzon to California as slave labor to establish the Spanish foothold in North America. And whereas during World War II, more than 260,000 Filipino and Filipino-American soldiers served under the United States flag to make our victory possible and fought for the promise of a more just and inclusive nation. Today, Georgia is more than 50,000 Filipino-Americans strong, and more than 4 million reside in our nation, making up one of the largest Asian-American ethnic groups in the United States. And whereas during Filipino-American History Month, communities recognize the social, intellectual, and economic contributions this group made and makes to our country. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners proclaim this October as Filipino-American History Month in Cobb County, and we encourage all to celebrate their stories, their culture, and contributions in our community, our state, and our nation. This the 22nd day of October 2024. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid, and thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Honorary Consul General of the Philippines, Raoul Ray Donado, we would like to express our thanks and gratitude to Cobb County for supporting us every single year when we first started the FAM, which is the Filipino-American History Month in Georgia. Cobb County is the first, and to this day, the only county who is celebrating it with us for the fourth consecutive year, and thank you so much. We are so, so grateful. And with that, I would like to present to you my countryman, and everybody born and raised in the Philippines, I guess, but not really, somewhere. But we promise that from where we came from, you will see the whole hearts when we are working, and we love the country where we're here, where we came to be. And we, as we assimilate into the mainstream America, we are not just Filipinos, but Filipino-Americans. Thank you so much. I would like to introduce, I would like you guys to introduce yourselves.
I'm Isa Thompson, part of the Filipino-American History Month Committee, and I just wanted to add that the celebration of Filipino-American History Month in October is a nationwide celebration. So in fact, we just received a posting from POTUS, our president, you know, declaring a great friendship between the Filipino and Americans, and declaring the whole month of October as Filipino-American History Month. Mabuhay ang Pinoy. Mabuhay. That's our cheer. So I had to add that.
I am Venus Soriano. I'm the President of the Filipino-American Association of Greater Atlanta.
My name is Arja Turner. I am a staff of Chairwoman Lisa Cupid, but tonight, I'm wearing the Filipino-American Hat Community Leader as part of FAM since its inception, actually, in 2019. And it was because of Chairwoman Lisa's encouragement for us diverse groups, immigrant groups, to be engaged in the county that she started having this. We can do a proclamation for that because we've, we've had it done at the governor's level. So thank you so much, Chairwoman Lisa.
Hi, good evening. This is Imelda Young. I'm the President of Philippine American Women Association of Georgia. This is about the abused women, from that married to an American. They're all Filipinos. Thank you.
I'm Pam Peterman. I'm with the Filipino Nurses Association of Georgia and Filipino Association of Georgia Foundation.
Good evening. I'm Beth West, retired Army. I have served my duty as a active military and also the Georgia National Guard. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ken Cromer. I'm a Lieutenant with the Cobb County Police Department, and this November, I'll be going into my 25th year here, so.
My name is Robert Peterman. I am the American part of the Philippine American Association. I've helped with all the, as much as I can and keep everything organized. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen McElroy. I work with the University of Georgia Cobb County Extension Service with the 4H Youth Program. Glad, glad to represent.
My name is Malachi McElroy, and I'm a member of the Filipino Student Association
and I'm a member of the Filipino Student Association Club at Kennesaw State.
We'll line up and go take a picture. You guys want to come in a little bit? Okay, this takes us to our public hearing tab, and we do have one Department of Transportation matter.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager Drew Ressler with DOT. By way of background, on October 19th, 2021, the Board of Commissioners approved application for rezoning Z7220 to develop approximately 33 acres of land located southwest of the intersection of Johnson Ferry Road and Shallowford Road. As part of this application, the Board approved the relocation of Waterfront Drive between Johnson Ferry Road and Waterfront Circle. The associated site plans have been approved by the required departments. In order to construct the development, a portion of the existing Waterfront Drive right-of-way between Johnson Ferry Road and Waterfront Circle must be abandoned. The developer, Johnson Ferry Road LLC, has petitioned the county to close this portion of Waterfront Drive, abandon the right-of-way, and issue a quitclaim deed. In accordance with state law, a public hearing must be held prior to the closing and abandonment of a public roadway. Therefore, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Waterfront Drive.
Thank you, Drew. With that, I will open up the public hearing for an unlimited number of speakers to speak on this matter and this matter only. And you'll have three minutes to do so. All right, not seeing any speakers. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Drew? Yes, Commissioner.
Because this is my district. I have not received any comments and didn't know if DOT had.
I have not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. I believe, go ahead, Commissioner.
And I can read the recommendation, the special recommendation.
Commissioner Burl is submitting her statement to the county clerk to be recorded.
And I'd like the clerk to also record my statement as found on page 184 of the current agenda. Thank you.
All right, Drew, you can go ahead.
Thank you. The department recommends that the board determine that reference right-of-way serves no substantial public purpose, authorize the disposition of same by quitclaim deed to the adjoining owner, Johnson Ferry Road LLC, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary document in a form substantially similar to the attached.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Richardson being absent. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Richardson is absent for great reason. She has a plus-one, baby girl. Very happy. And just keep her and the dad in your thoughts and prayers. And of course, baby girl. All right, with that, that takes us to our first public comment. Debbie, can you tee us up for us?
Yes, good evening. As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. Comments should not be slanderous. The board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And a timer is provided on the podium to track your three minutes. Our first speaker is Donna Rowe.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Donna Rowe, and I'm the President and CEO of the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation. I want to begin tonight by expressing my sincerest thanks to Commissioner Burl for her years of undying support to the Veterans Memorial and all our veterans and our first responders. And she did not know I was going to be here tonight. I want to also thank and express my sincere thanks and gratitude to Chairman Cupid for her dedicating the $500,000 of her discretionary funds towards the Veterans Memorial Park. This generous contribution brings us significantly closer to realizing our goal of the lasting tribute to our veterans. I never thought nine and a half years ago that I or my board members present tonight or the veterans in the room would be standing here with no memorial built, especially after this commission established the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation with unanimous vote in 2015 to partner with Cobb County Government to build the memorial. And at the time, the projected cost was 2.5 million. And now here I stand. Here we are. No memorial and over 60,000 Cobb veterans not being honored. And the cost now, thanks to inflation, is over $7 million. As a veteran and fellow resident of Cobb County, I share a deep appreciation for the sacrifices made by our veterans. The Cobb Veterans Memorial Park is a project of immense importance to our community, to a place of honor of our veterans who served and sacrificed. I stand before you tonight as the President of the Cobb Veterans Memorial to assure you that I and the Board of Directors are strongly dedicated to making this vision possible. However, I must express my concern and disappointment regarding the ongoing delays in the review and the approval of the revised memorandum of understanding, the MOU. We submitted the revised MOU to the County Attorney's Office September 9th. Yet we have not received any formal feedback or clear timeline for the presentation to the board. The lack of communication and the firm timeline is causing us anxiety and frustration, not only to my board, but to the 60,000 veterans we represent and the thousands and thousands of donors that have entrusted their money to us. To ensure the project stays on track, we respectfully request a clear timeline for the MOU review, including its presentation to you all, our Board of Commissioners. This memorial is a SPOLOX project of Commissioner Joanne Burrell, and she is the one we've been working with for the past seven years. Hence, we want to continue to work with her.
Ms. Rowe, your time has run.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
The next speaker is Dave McFarland.
Chairman Cupid, my name is Dave McFarland. You know me as the original local control guy. In accordance with FOIA laws, I've asked for the name, contact information, position of the ARPA consultant you mentioned in the MDJ article covering the ARPA funds. The FOIA laws require a government response in 72 hours. It's now been three months, and I've yet to receive that contact information. I've asked this via email, paper letter, and a self-addressed envelope to you and your staff. I now respectfully ask you to fill out the form I left on the dais so you can return it to me tonight. Doing so would show respect to my lawful and citizen duty request. My understanding is that if you don't release this information, then you're breaking the law. Why is this such a big deal? In that MDJ article, you said, "I just heard from a consultant from the federal government talking about the unique approach to ARPA and how that's been used as a model for some other areas and how we utilize the consultant." So as an unelected, unaccountable, and probably uncaring federal official approach to and how to raise taxes on already furious Cobb homeowners. And you hired a third-party consultant to tell you how they probably knew you already wanted to hear. To me, this is somewhat underhanded and a prime example of federal overreach. I feel that ARPA, AFH, and ARC monies are illegal, unconstitutional, and a dangerous centralization of power, which you know, where money and the strings attached are feeding a federal monster. Whether that monster is bureaucratic or globalist, I don't know. But the solution is the same: don't take the money. Social engineering is not an enumerated federal power, and according to the facts and figures cited by the Thomas Sowell book that I sent you, always ends in disaster. In the MDJ article, you said, "These funds will be transformational." Transformational? The what? The Cobb run by bureaucrats, federal bureaucrats? Free money brings into question to BLC allegiance? Is it ARPA consultant or to the Cobb taxpayer? You once said that Cobb is not an island. Cobb has been an island in the sea of Atlantic insanity, and that's why we moved here. We want Cobb to be an island. So FEMA, Secret Service, Build Back Better, EV charging are all federal disasters. We don't want Cobb transformed into a federal disaster. If we keep the Dobbin's tax base, we don't need ARPA or AFFH or ARC or ADU. And we keep Cobb government to his manageable size. That's why we love Cobb. We don't want the money. We don't want the money. Let me repeat that. We don't want the money. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alicia Adams.
Good evening, ladies. I'm so excited to see T-shirts out there that say "Freedom from Traffic." It's a great idea, but it's not going to work with this mobility SPOLOX. There's nothing in the mobility SPOLOX that says, empirically, there's no data to support that any traffic congestion will be relieved as a result of the implementation of this M-SPOLOX. We have 73 miles of proposed bus rapid transit. But I can tell you, having ridden buses and watched and talked to riders, and I can tell you, one bus driver actually told me, "Nobody professional is ever going to ride this. This is working poor." Now, I don't like that. I don't like the way that that sounded. But when I've asked the professionals, because the M-SPOLOX proposes that we're going to have a 12-fold increase in ridership, and I call the "ca-ca" card. Because quite frankly, we don't even have data to support how many people are riding currently. We have fare boxes that have been broken for years now. So you cannot tell me how many people are riding. So you can't tell me how much it's going to increase. There's no way to have that projection. How do I know? Because I've gone to use my Breeze card, and it wouldn't work on multiple buses. And I've seen it numerous times, firsthand witness. So if there's no data, how do we know? How can we say it's going to be great? And by the way, we've talked about microtransit, and what a great idea it is. But it's not like Uber or Lyft, where they come to your door and they take you straight down to whatever venue it is. No. This is 14 districts where you go from one microdistrict to the next microdistrict, and you got to call for that person to come get you. Then you go to the next microdistrict until eventually you get to the transfer center and then get down to the stadium. And that's how it was explained to us when we went to a transit meeting, and it was at a senior gathering. So I encourage you, everyone. This is not a workable plan. This is pie in the sky. And it's unfortunate that we have spent millions of dollars in outside consultants to come up with a plan that's not going to address, it's not going to alleviate our traffic jams. And that's the problem that we have. We have more transit potentially, but no alleviation of traffic. And by the way, if you support it, and you're not going to get rid of your car...
Ma'am, your time has run. Thank you. The next speaker is Rich Hinz.
Good evening. I thank you all for being here this evening. I sat through the working meeting this afternoon and listened very carefully to the discussion about ADUs, Affordable, sorry, Accessory Dwelling Units. And I listened to how they were referred to as a solution or a tool to help cure affordable housing. And as near as I can figure, it's like tuning a violin with a sledgehammer. You're talking about converting single-family homes into duplexes across the county. I heard this afternoon that up to 85% of these units as possible units across the county, 85% of them could be in District 1 and District 3. And that just doesn't sound right, especially because even with this M-SPOLOX proposal, we're not looking at getting a whole lot of transportation assistance out there. I see this as a, the intent is to create a massive transient population in bedroom communities. I mean, you say that it's not really about creating rental properties, and yet you want to also increase the number of unrelated people that can live on a single-family home lot. You want to increase the amount of parking on those single-family home lots. You want to increase the parking on the streets in these quiet bedroom neighborhoods. I'm deeply, deeply concerned about this. I see this as an atom bomb falling on Cobb County. And in 10 years, we won't recognize it. It'll end up being much like Staten Island. This proposal really needs to be tabled until we know the effects on homestead exemptions, senior property tax exemptions. We need to understand what this will do to storm water throughout the county. And we need to understand how you're going to deal with this with sewage systems. As I understand it, there can be lift units to pump sewage in rental properties. Would these even qualify for that? At the end of the day, I just see this as being fraught with disaster. And it's something that needs to be explained to all of the neighborhood leaders, the HOA leaders, because they need to prepare. And they're going to need time to prepare to deal with this potential bomb going off. Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Rosman.
Hello, Chair, Commissioners. Christine Rosman, speaking on behalf of myself and other critical thinkers and taxpayers that are wondering what the heck's going on? Because we look at so many things that make no sense to us because it's not what we want. And I've been coming up here for years and asking the same question, which is, whose agenda are you listening to? Because it sure isn't ours. And case in point would be that work session from today. And talking about the accessory dwelling units and the UDC. And you know what's funny is that I do a little research. You know, I start looking around because I'm like, this is weird. Like, why do we want this? Why is, or some, some, not the Republicans, but frankly, the Democrats pushing for some of these things? And so I started looking around... And so I started looking around, and I found a coincidence, okay? So who else is pushing DEI? Who else is pushing ADUs, UDC, waste removal, getting the government to do the waste removal and trying to get rid of the haulers? Remember that one, that basically everybody came out and said, "We don't want this"? And guess what that common denominator was? It was the World Economic Forum. Isn't that weird? But you know what else is weird, too? Is we spend tens of millions of our tax dollars getting the consultants of Deloitte and Accenture. Well, guess what? They're all intertwined with the World Economic Forum because they're partners. They're going to Davos. So they find out what the World Economic Forum wants, and then they come back to us and sell it to us. And not only sell it to Cobb, they're selling it to Gwinnett, they're selling it to Fulton, they're selling it to Cab, and they're selling it all over the country. And we're the Stooges that are paying for it, okay? It's not what we want. And you have a lot of, so this whole thing that UDC? Yeah, that's undermining and destroying Cobb County. And the reason why I have to use these signs is because we're not allowed to use the AV equipment. Everybody else is, but the people that are actually paying for it, right? And so here we also have, what else is going on? Why is, what the heck is going on with Cobb? Well, it's called Rules For Thee, but not, or Rules For Thee, but Not For The Three. So you guys have been doing some really wonky things.
Ms. Rosman, your time has run. Evidently, I've mispronounced your name.
It's fine. Hi, I'm Matt Stegall. I live in District 1, and I honorably serve on the Transit Advisory Board. And first off tonight, I first want to talk about a couple of things I'd love to celebrate. Next week, the microtransit pilot is launching in South Cobb. This is an evolution of the previous flex zones, and will increase the service for many residents in South Cobb County. And tonight, I'm also excited about the pilot being discussed to be launched for KSU students that's on the agenda tonight. This will provide free rides for students, and will give them access and opportunities they currently don't have. So I'm really excited that that's on the consent agenda, and I look forward to that passing. Both of these projects will move forward in the county, will move mobility forward in this county, and I look forward to these pilots being both successful and expanded. I thank the board and the Department of Transportation for providing enhanced public service and investment for the people in our county today and in the future. And on that note, I do want to mention that as this county faces many challenges in moving forward and continuing to thrive, I see lies and misinformation being spread online and up here in public comment. As we have seen these lies spread about transit, I'm also seeing similar lies spread about ADUs. Next month, a proposal is on the agenda, add ADUs to the county code. And opposition is already out spreading misinformation and fear mongering. You heard earlier that it's like a bomb going off in the county. And the truth is, is that this is a special land use permit. It doesn't allow it to be built all throughout the county, all of those type of things. They still have to go in front of the Board of Commissioners, get the special land use permit approved, and then be able to then add the ADU. And just like transportation is a big challenge in this county, housing is also a big challenge in this county, especially for future generations, and ADUs is a proven tool to be able to provide affordable housing and be able to provide that much-needed, you know, ability for us to attract new residents. And with that being said, I think that the proposal, it is restrictive and limited as currently written, but just being able to define it in the county code and then also having it as a special land use permit, still gives the commission the power to be able to approve or deny each one as it comes forth. So this whole idea of apartments in every neighborhood, and this whole idea of the schools being overrun, and all of this fear mongering, and all this nonsense that's being spread, you know, is just, none of it's true. And with it being defined and as a special land use permit, it now is available as a tool-
Excuse me, Matt, excuse me, I'm sorry. I keep hearing chatter, laughter, that I did not hear coincidentally when the other speakers prior to you spoke. And I find it very rude, because I let it go the first two times, but after this third time, I'm not going to do that. So whoever cannot contain themselves, even though they were able to contain themselves before, I'm going to ask for them to please be as respectful to the speaker as we were to the prior ones. If you can't do that, there is a space for you to get all of that out without interrupting our speaker.
And yeah, if people actually read the code changes, they'll see it's a special land use permit, still has to go in front of the commissioners. They'll see that it still has to follow all HOA rules, bylaws, covenants, all of that. The landowner has to still live there as their primary residence. So there's all those restrictions in place. So this whole idea that it's this big impactful atom bomb dropped on the county is just misinformation and fear, and we're continuing to see that. And I think people just need to look at what it is and see the benefit it impacts for the county. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cynthia Patterson.
My name is Cynthia Patterson, and I live in Marietta. If the MSPOST is approved by voters in November, a one penny sales tax would collect a projected $10.8 billion over 30 years to fund Cobb County's future growth and mobility needs. In 2050, just 26 years from now, an estimated 1,035,000 residents and 526,000 jobs will call Cobb home. Housing preferences are trending toward live, work, play communities and away from suburban sprawl. If we plan wisely now, public transportation will extend mobility and travel freedom to all residents and employees. An extensive interconnected transit system helps reduce traffic congestion and reduces gas consumption. If the MSPOST is approved by voters, the cost of Cobb County transit will be shared by consumers who purchase goods in the county, residents and non-residents. If the MSPOST is rejected by voters, Cobb County will continue to fund Cobb Link primarily with local property taxes supplemented by federal funds and rider fares. Taxes is not a four-letter word. Everyone ships in a little, and all of us benefit. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Hillwright.
Hillwright, stop ramming the ADU code through. Protect our neighborhoods. Here we are again, another attempt to ram through a major change without, with an artificial deadline, rushing to pass something harmful instead of good. First, you told us the entire zoning code needed to be written, so you hired a consultant. That consultant held listening sessions, and the message from the residents was loud and clear: Leave our neighborhoods alone. In December, Jessica Gwynn stood in a town hall on the UDC and told us, "We're leaving your neighborhoods alone." But here we are today with Chair Cupid pushing a plan that does exactly the opposite, forcing it through without citizen input, without transparency, without time for neighborhoods to pair or update covenants. Citizens see through the emails and statements you send, pretending that we don't understand the consequences of this proposal. We understand perfectly well. The plan will bring rental units into backyards, increase density, and change the very character of your neighborhoods. And Chair Cupid said it herself today, "This is more about creating housing, not protecting our communities." The county attorney said, "HOAs will protect neighborhoods," but why the hell doesn't this board? Chair Cupid's party is cramming through as much housing as possible in every space, not preserving the suburban community we choose to live in. You claim this won't lead to backyard rentals, that's exactly what it does. You're for Halloween adequately, and Chair Cupid will pave the way for rentals where they can fit, turning our neighborhoods into rental zones where owners will no longer want to stay. Today's meeting was not a thoughtful presentation of a well-developed plan. It was a clown show. You don't have the answers you should already have. There's a major change to our zoning protections, and it's being rushed through without citizen oversight. We demand you remove this from next month's agenda, hold real town halls, and give citizens a chance to ask questions. Stop ramming this down our throats. And stop dancing around with this radical transformation of our community, the Cupid shuffle to push an agenda that ignores the residents and other commissioners. Chair Cupid, you do not represent the people. You represent a plan to turn our neighborhoods into something we never asked for. This is exactly why the citizens of Cobb County must vote to remove Chair Cupid and Commissioner Sheffield. If you refuse to listen, we'll make sure our voices are heard at the ballot box.
The next speaker is Mr. Craig Harfoot.
My name is Craig Harfoot. I was doing some research on Sam Olins, you know, back in a few months ago, but something came up, and he was getting all these bad marks on, I can't think of the site, but it was over the fact that he killed the county, well, Ms. McMorris's position, Dr. McMorris's position, when it was David Hankerson. He actually said, "You're not going to, the county manager isn't going to keep minutes of her official, of his official business, and you haven't done it since," which took out transparency, and that's what they were beating on him for in this voter's guide on the internet. It's something we need back. And I mean, it's, and if we had it, all that secret stuff about the brave stadium and all this stuff, it wouldn't, you know? If you want transparency, you keep minutes, and those minutes are public record, and then people can ask for open records on it and know what's really going on. And this is, this is like the linchpin, if you want to go forward and have a better Cobb County. And the other thing is, the, I was, paid my tax bill this month, and in the office, there was 20 people, and we weren't there for tags. It was all people my age that actually owned their homes. And you guys here always are talking about homeowners, homeowners, homeowners. Unless you own your house free and clear, you're not a homeowner, you're a debt holder. And if you have a mortgage, the bank, you have a deed to secure debt, and that means the bank owns it, you just have the right to live on it and pay the taxes, and you don't do any of that stuff, and you're out. And you got to remember that when you're writing this UDC stuff. I mean, it's one thing if a homeowner has a kid and says, "Oh, I want to put something for them to live there." But, you know, it's not a fix-all, do-all. And the fact that house prices have gone through the roof, it's more about a conspiracy of BlackRock bidding against other people trying to buy a first home and running up the bills, and then by not rolling back the millage rate, you really hurt everybody in the county, even renters, because all that's passed through. And if you, the way you're going to do this, you're going to just make the assessments go up again. And that's not going to make stuff more affordable, and if it's truly a member that doesn't have a job-
Mr. Harfoot? Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Raymond Goslow.
All right, good evening, Board. My name is Raymond Goslow, and I'm from Marietta. It is very good to be here. I went to vote last week, and it was a very beautiful day. I knew the traffic was going to be crazy around the main elections office. I live about two miles from the elections office, so I decided to walk on up and vote that afternoon. I walked on up to Cobb Parkway, because I live on the other side of Cobb Parkway, and I looked up, I saw the big sign that said, "This is how many minutes it's going to take you to get all the way up to Highway 92." It was bright red numbers. It was 41 minutes on I-75, over 60 minutes on Highway 41, and I just looked at that sign, and I thought, "I cannot believe somebody is using this government-funded sign to advertise for the MSPOST and the need for other transit options in our county." It's totally unethical, I think. All right, screwing my head back on, coming back down out of Cuckoo Land, sometimes the situation that we see in front of us in our county is very, very evident, and we don't need to debate over what is or isn't happening. We have a terrible traffic problem in our county. And we've spent decades building ourselves into this situation. It is going to take an invested effort over many, many years to get ourselves out. It is not going to take a five-year effort. It takes years and decades. It could take a 30-year effort, and it takes lots of different projects all throughout time. So that is, that is what we are seeing there. I am very grateful to the county and the board for pulling together the informational information on the MSPOST proposal. I went and looked through it myself before I voted, and I saw the information that showed where we're going to be in five years, 10 years, so on, if we pass it, and the various projects that are part of it. I got to say, that is something that most people do not expect from their government, even when they're doing it without a public vote. So to have that much information out there ahead of a public vote is something that I truly want to give credit for. So I, as a young person, I am looking at this vote, and I think the other young people in Cobb County are looking at this vote. We are not looking at it and thinking, "Gosh, I hope we don't get locked into 30 years of a sales tax or whatever." The young people in this county are looking at this vote and saying, "Do the voters of this county, do the taxpayers of this county, do they care enough to invest in the future that we will be living in?" I live here in Cobb County. I grew up in Cobb County. I went to school in Cobb County. I worked my first job here in Cobb County. I loved Cobb County enough to purchase my home here. And obviously, again, I think Cobb County is pretty darn good if I did all of that, but I'm going to be hopefully living here for the rest of my life, and I would like to see not just a good Cobb County, because if you let good stay, it will slide down. I want us to see us taking an effort to build a better Cobb County, and that is what the MSPOST will do. Thank you.
That was the last speaker for the first segment.
Thank you. With that, Commissioners, before we move on to our consent agenda, we do have a non-agenda item to add, which is to authorize the settlement of Ayanna Williams versus Cobb County, Georgia, Civil Action File Number 22-1-02143 in the Superior Court of Cobb County, Georgia. And with that, Commissioners, I move that we add this item to the end of our consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. As for the other matters on our consent agenda, they have been scrolling on the screen prior to the meeting, and we'll scroll on the screen towards the end of the meeting. All of the matters on our consent agenda are voted on in bank, and I will add that we do have some revisions to our consent agenda, and these are not in the particular order. The first one is number four, the revised resolution with respect to renaming our Cobb Multifamily Specialty VA Clinic to be named the Colonel Michael H. Boyce Department of Veterans Affairs. And so there is a revision to that. Commissioner Burrow? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I believe it was just some punctuation and grammatical. Actually, Congressman Barry Loudermilk will be submitting this. We are just showing our sup- We are just showing our support for the naming of the clinic in honor of Colonel Mike Boyce. And his wife is here tonight, Judy Boyce.
Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, we also have, yes, thank you, Commissioner Burrow, we do have two other revisions that I'm aware of. One is a revision to Agenda Item 20 under Fire and Emergency Services, which is accepting the sponsorship contribution to the Safety Village for the Braves Stadium. And then the second one is similar, a revision to the item with respect to the sponsorship contribution to the Safety Village for the UL Research Institute's Interactive Science Safety Classroom. And both of those are striking out language that states that it will be constructed by Cobb County Property Management. Okay? With that, Commissioner, I believe that we were supposed to pull an agenda item as well. Let me get the number. We're supposed to pull the Sheriff's Office Agenda Item Number Five from the, okay, thank you, from the consent agenda as well, and we'll discuss that following approval of our consent. And I also have in front of me revision to Agenda Item Number 30, and that is with respect to reallocation of the federal ARPA funding from magistrate court, and that one is changing the expenditure line. Thank you, Commissioner. That's why I don't have it on, because that's a regular agenda item, Commissioner. It's okay. We'll get to that. Thank you, Commissioner. It's okay. You're ahead of the game. All right. So why don't we, Commissioners, go ahead and address the consent agenda unless there are any other revisions that Commissioners have? All right? With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised, and to authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner.
I'd like to note my opposition to Agenda Item Number 16 and 24.
Okay, and 16 is with respect to the pilot student transit program agreement, and you said what other number, Commissioner? 24 is with respect to the warming shelter. Okay, any other comments? All right, call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, we do have the agenda item regarding the Sheriff's Department that has been pulled. Is there anyone here from his department? Great. If you can come up and address the board, please. And for the public, this agenda item is to approve a training services agreement between the Georgia Public Safety Training Center and the North Georgia, or North Central Georgia Law Enforcement Academy, and to approve the establishment of a new unit within Fund 270 for the operational period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, of the North Central Georgia Law Enforcement Academy, and to authorize the general fund local match funding.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
And Commissioners, I'm David Jones, Chief of Staff for the Cobb County Sheriff's Office. I'm also here with Lieutenant Morris, Lieutenant Colonel Morris. I know you understand, you may have had some questions about the agenda item in respect to the money that we're receiving from the actual state. It is $150,000 that we're actually receiving from the state. That is what this agenda item is referencing, is receiving that, that, those funds. In addition to what we've, what we have done with the Sheriff's Office, has went back to increase the funds that we receive from outside agencies from $75 to $150, which will take place in January. Those funds will kick in in January. We've also had communications with two senators who is willing to speak on our behalf before the legislative session next year to increase those funds as well. What the amount is, we're not sure, but they've communicated it to us that they're willing to take that before the legislative session to increase those funds.
And they're from our local delegation? They're legislators from Cobb County?
Correct.
Okay. So I know I talked to Dr. McMorris about this earlier. Just to be clear, this agenda item is authorizing for us to receive $150,000 in addition to what we already had put in our budget for this year?
Correct.
Okay. And that's why this impact statement says it will not have any further impact on the budget at county fund?
Correct.
Okay. That wasn't necessarily spelled out when we saw the agenda item. Commissioner Gamble had a lot of questions yesterday, so I'm gonna lead off with you if you have any other questions, and then I'll see if other Commissioners do as well.
Sure. Are you aware of the documents that, I believe it's Deputy Chief Gina Hawkins sent to the county manager?
I am.
So in those documents, I found it very interesting that essentially she said that it was gonna cost $1.5 million to run the training programs, but in this agenda item, you've got just over 1.6 with the funding balance between Cobb County's 910,000 and then the 150 that we're getting from the state. I understand we're charging, you know, $150, but doing the simple math, again, taking what Deputy Chief Hawkins had in that email, essentially 1,771 participants are expected to go through there. So at her estimate, or using the 1.5 million that she put in there, that essentially comes out to $850 a person to go through the training, but we're only requiring $150. So essentially Cobb County is subsidizing $700 for each officer that goes through that class that is not necessarily a Cobb County officer. Using the numbers that you have in this agenda item, it comes down to just under $600 for each officer that goes through it. So in this instance, Cobb County is funding $450 per officer to go through this class. And again, this is not necessarily a Cobb County officer. So I hope when you're talking to the state and the senators, you let them know that essentially Cobb County is subsidizing other jurisdictions' officers at the jeopardy of our own in some respects, because this is money that we're not able to use to give to our officers to help with retention and other issues that we have. I know this, I discussed this with the sheriff a year ago, and it wasn't discussed in the last legislative session, so I do truly hope it is done this time. And while I will support this agenda item, because it saves the taxpayers $150,000, I still question this agenda item, because you're saying it's only just over a million dollars, but that letter from Deputy Chief Hawkins was a million five. So where's the other 500,000 gonna come from?
I understand the figures. The fees that you're speaking of, that we charge our partner agencies, is $150 per officer of that department, not just who receives that training. We get reimbursed from the state on people that go to that training. So when the fees will go up in January, because the sheriff and the chiefs met with all the partner agencies and discussed the fees, they went up, they doubled the fees. So it's a good question, but we have figured out from the usage with finance what our projected costs were, and it's been the same projected cost in the last at least six years. It's all stayed the same. So right now, we're trying to catch up and get the state and the Public Safety Committee from the state to allow us more money. And that, my understanding, will be addressed at the first of the legislative session this year, because we have one local representative and one Senator Alberts, who's head of the Public Safety Committee, who has given his commitment. So I don't, I don't, from reading what you're saying, you are correct, and I don't know what the difference is of the 500,000.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Yep, I'll go to Burrow, and I'll go to you, I'm Sheffield.
Good evening, Dwayne and David. I know last year, we added to our budget, in the 24 budget, because of cuts from the state, and this is, this academy, the sheriff is mandated to run this academy, and it is other officers and deputies from all over North Georgia that go to this. And our own police have a separate training facility and center. So my concern is if we don't have the funding from the state and we're supplementing it, and I know the 900,000 is already budgeted for 2025 budget for us and for the sheriff. So if this is just accepting 150,000, which, where did that come from if they've been giving us cuts the past couple of years?
The last, I can tell you, the last four years that I've been here, we've had the same amount, this kind of, what you're speaking of is, I think, prior to COVID, it was higher, and for some reason, and we don't know why, nobody can tell us, they reduced the fees, but they've been, this same contract is, they just changed the dates on it for, at least the last six years, I know, because I pulled the prior two years when we first got into this. We had a robust.
So that's all they've been, that we've been receiving is 150,000?
Yes, ma'am.
All they've done?
And we've been working on this for the last couple of years.
Okay, so, and you don't have to go through the legislature to approve your fees to increase them 50%?
No, ma'am. We met with all our partner agencies. Because of everybody's budget, it's either October, June, or calendar year, and we give them ample time, hey, we're gonna go up on the rates. They decided this is when they'll do it, and this is how much it is, and everybody's signed on to that. So it takes a little bit to get everybody together and get all the finance people together, and, you know, you're doubling a fee with about three months' notice, so it's, it's a large amount for some of these smaller cities and counties, because a majority of the people we have, the cities from here, but we also have cities, but we have county sheriff's departments, which also have to attend our jailer's school, which we provide.
Okay.
And one other thing, the reason why January 1st is such a significant date is the hours of mandate training almost doubled. The state has changed the mandate training from 10 to 20 weeks. So it's, and they haven't addressed that with us either, so that's what we, because they just changed it this year, and we're having to scramble to keep up with that, because we've got to add on some extra time for classes. But that was an unfunded mandate that we said, here you go, and we have to do it.
I just had a question for clarification regarding the reimbursement. Is the reimbursement for non-Cobb participants received solely from the state, or is it also received from the participating or partner agencies?
We do have them from participating partner agencies and the state.
Okay, from both?
And I believe it goes into what they call G665, which is the, is where all the revenue goes in before they transfer it out to the, we just add a number every year and just open it up.
Okay, but it is received by both?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from Commissioners? Again, we appreciate the work that you have done and that you will do to see how we can remove the bulk of this burden from Cobb County taxpayers beyond our fair share, and we look forward to the senators working with you this upcoming legislative session. We set our legislative agenda towards the end of the year. This is something that we can support as well, and we'd be, I'm sure, we'd be happy to help support this effort if needed.
Oh, we do need the help.
Okay, thank you. With that, Commissioners, I do move that we approve Agenda Item Number Five, again, which is to approve a training services agreement between the Georgia Public Safety Training Center and the North Central Georgia Law Enforcement Academy, and to approve establishment of a new unit within Fund 270 for the operational period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, of the North Central Georgia Law Enforcement Academy, and to authorize the general fund local match funding, and to authorize the transfer of all personnel associated with Unit G680 into Unit G681, and to authorize the corresponding budget and accounting transactions, and to further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you, gentlemen. With that, we are now moving on to our next regular tab of the agenda, which is for magistrate court.
Good evening, Chairwoman, members of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for having us this evening. I want to start by thanking some folks that assisted us with this agenda item, Debbie from the county attorney's office, and Jimmy and Bill were very helpful in us preparing this agenda item. I did want to cover, you'd begun to cover, the revision to the item. The numbers are the same, the amount of dollars that we're asking the board to move from one allowable use to the other is the same.
I'm gonna interrupt you momentarily, just to say, before us is our Chief Magistrate Judge Brendan Murphy.
Thank you. That's candidate 101, you say your name, but we were reelected in May, so I appreciate that, but yes.
When you just ease on through elections, you know.
That's right. Thank you. I am Brendan Murphy, and I serve as the Chief Magistrate Judge here in Cobb County, and thank you. So again, thank you, Debbie, and Jimmy and Bill, and also to our Court Administrator, Tanisha Phillips, who assisted with this item. So as far as the revisions, under the funding paragraph, there's nothing substantive that changed, it's just stylistic, and we were asked to put it in a different style, but the dollar amounts remain the same. And under the recommendations, somebody in the clerk's office maybe caught that we missed an S. So you are Board of Commissioners, not Board of Commissioner, so even though it's a pink sheet, there's nothing substantive, and we appreciate everybody's help with that.
Thank you.
So I just want to reflect a little bit of where we are and where we're asking the Board of Commissioners to go. This county, the magistrate court handles eviction cases. This county sees between 20 and 22,000 eviction filings each year. During the pandemic, federal funding was made available to assist landlords remain solvent and to assist tenants remain in their homes during the global pandemic. Cobb County was recognized by ACCG and also nationwide as a leader in emergency rental assistance. This board dispersed that federal funding to five different agencies. Some were local in scope, some were national in scope, some were physically present, some had more of an online presence, and that, that widespread approach was highly successful. As the emergency rental assistance funding was beginning to be exhausted, we came to this board and asked this board to reserve the last million dollars of federal emergency rental assistance money to stand up what we now call the Housing Stability Court. Instead of going from very fast assistance during a pandemic to nothing, we wanted to reserve that funding to create a pilot program modeled on the very successful criminal accountability courts that we see in Cobb County. And the idea was, bring together emergency rental assistance with case management resources to help families facing eviction for the first time have the skills, job skills, financial literacy, budgeting, resume writing, connection with Cobb, work source Cobb, so that they would not find themselves back in eviction court, to break that chain of people that are facing eviction as soon as possible. And the board saw fit to do that, to fund, to fund and stand up this pilot program. The ERA funding by federal law runs through September of 2025. Our partner that the board had originally authorized for ERA and then authorized the court to continue with is the Center for Family Resources, represented tonight by its CEO, Melanie Kagan. Of course, that's a longtime 50-year Cobb County nonprofit organization. And so bylaw- And so, um, by law, those funds can go through September of 2025. We estimate that those funds will be expended through approximately into July or August of '25. In a different agenda item, this board had appropriated federal ARPA, A-R-P-A, funds to the magistrate court for an allowable, uh, an allowable use, which was to avoid a case backlog. You saw in many places around the state, in many places around the country, courts were crippled and did not have the resources necessary to make sure that the cases were moving once the pandemic allowed. Of course, our magistrate court never closed, I'm very proud of that. We did so in a way that was safe. And so now what we are asking is to move that funding, which is in a magistrate court line item, from the magistrate court to the Housing Stability Court Program. The ARPA funding will run the program all the way through potentially October of '26. So whenever the ERA is expended in approximately July or August of '25, the ER, excuse me, the ARPA funding would then kick in and run the program all the way through until the end of ARPA, which would be December of '26, but everything needs to be accounted by October of '26. And so that's the budget that we've prepared. And so we're asking this board to move the ARPA funds from one allowable use, which was working on case backlog, preventing a case backlog, and move it into the Housing Stability Court, which we should be very proud of. Already 48 families have been through the program. It's a unique approach nationwide. We didn't want to create something new. I really didn't. I wanted to find something that worked somewhere else and bring it to Cobb County. But from my view, the Cobb County way is to do two things. We're not just going to distribute funding and hope for the best, or we're not just gonna give folks case management and say, well, here's how you budget better next time, and here's your eviction order in, in your other hand. By marrying the two things, by saying, here's some assistance on the financial side, and here's some assistance to help your family have a leg up, to make sure you don't find yourself back in this situation. Doing both of those things together has been successful, and with your support of this item, will continue to be successful. I'm glad to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Just appreciate your initiative from the pandemic and afterward and being transformative so that we can keep families housed and hopefully gainfully housed. All right, so they're not coming back before us asking for resources. We know this is a limited amount of funds that we have to recover from the pandemic. So anything that we can do to shore up a place for people to stay and to help them be able to do that on their own, I think is a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, commissioners, I move that we approve, let me get to the right portion of the agenda. I move that we approve the real allocation of unspent federal ARPA funding from the magistrate court of Cobb County to the Housing Stability Court Program administered by the magistrate court and the Center for Family Resources to authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute an amendment to the memorandum of understanding between Cobb County, the Center for Family Resources, and the magistrate court of Cobb County, and any other necessary documents to implement for said purpose.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to let y'all know that, I want to let parks know we're gonna be having a mock trial competition at courts, and I look forward to presenting the trophy to myself. So Michael, you know, I, I love that, but that was wonderful. We want to come next year, invite the elected officials, we would love to come.
Very good.
You are more than welcome to come.
Thank you. Good to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
And thank you to the Center for Family Resources. I see you back there. Thank you for working with our residents. All right, we are now on to the transportation tab.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Drew Ressler again. We do have just three items for your consideration on the regular agenda this evening. First item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of video detection cameras and communication manager equipment in an amount not to exceed $647,920, utilizing available state contracts for traffic signal timing, traffic signal detection, Project Number B 2564, and further authorize a corresponding budget transaction.
So moved. Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $51,078 for water relocations on Oakdale Road, Project Number B 22113. Authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. And our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement and installation of signage in an amount not to exceed $21,947 for Hollydale Gateway Sign Replacement, Project Number B 2603, and further authorize the corresponding budget transaction.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Appreciate that. That now takes us to our second public comment. Before we get started, I need to take a quick break. So we'll be back in about four minutes. We'll come back at 8:25. Thank you.
All righty, thank you and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting this October 22nd. We will go ahead and get to our second public comment.
Yes, the first speaker in the second segment is Ms. Denny Wilson.
Good evening. First of all, I want you guys to know-
I'm sorry, just state your name again for the record.
She just said it, didn't she?
I know, but we have the speakers.
Okay, Denny Wilson.
Thank you.
Uh, first of all, I need you guys, can you give me my minute back? Cause she interrupted me. Can you restart it?
Wasn't a whole minute, but you got it.
Okay. No, I didn't get it, cause it's at 2:42.
She's trying.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I want you guys to know, I'm not against transportation expansion in Cobb County. But what I am against is 11 billion over a 30-year period. I mean, I think if you guys had come with maybe 10 years, six years, 10 years, uh, six, seven, eight years, you know, along within the legal lines of the regular lines of what a SPOS is. Because we all know a SPOS never goes away. Uh, 30 years, it'll be renewed for another 30 years, cause it's gonna be put on the ballot for the, you know, constituents to vote on it. I live in South Cobb, which is what people have come here, uh, speaking about South Cobb that don't even live there. They don't know how the bus service is running in South Cobb. I live on Hill Chris Drive. We have the number 25, which puts me off pretty much across the street from my house, a little ways down, and the 30, which goes through the Six Flags area. Uh, I think both of them go to Hamilton E Homes. Um, I see the buses when they come down my street. And I do see people out in the mornings when I'm taking my morning walks. I do see women who use the bus to get back and forth to work. As a matter of fact, on some mornings, I've stopped and I've given them, um, you know, given them a ride. So, um, I think with the traffic congestion that's going on in this county right now, I mean, even tweaking up the traffic lights could ease some of the traffic problems in the county. But a 30-year SPOS, 11 billion, I think it's where the voters are confused and they're having problems with that. And another thing, I mean, 7 billion for operations and 4 billion for traffic? I mean, for transit? I think if you guys had reversed that and put 7 billion in traffic and 4 billion in operating, then I think that people would have been able to digest that a lot better than the way you guys have it written, because I've gone around the county and I've talked to people. And that's what they're saying. Why is 7 billion in, uh, operating and 4 billion? Why is more in operating than in the actual tra- uh, transit? And which, we don't know if it's gonna come full circle, so. Those are some of the issues that the voters that I've talked to have with this proposal for the MSPOS. And I've, I've already voted, I voted no. And I am suggesting to people that they vote no and let you guys come back to the drawing board with something that's better and more suitable to the citizens in this county. Cause I don't think a penny sales tax increase is warranted for you to expand this traffic, um, this transit. So have another look at it. Once it fails on November 5th, then maybe you guys can come back with a better plan. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Jan Barton.
Hello, I'm Jan Barton. And because of the county bureaucrats stopping the use of AV materials for we, the people who pay for them, I'm going to use these signs and I'm looking to make sure they're covered. Okay? And we're here to tell you that ADUs will not solve the affordability issue in Cobb County. Counties throughout the nation have tried this and they have realized they actually increased the cost. And because they turn into vacation by owners, VBOs, and they also turn into rental properties, which have been discussed by previous speakers. Another problem is that these discussions during Ms. Cupid's affordable committee meetings that did not include our other two commissioners, secret meetings are illegal according to the Open Meetings Act. This should not even go forward based on that. And MSPOS should not go forward. I don't know if you read Bob Ott, former Commissioner Bob Ott's column in South Cobb News today, but he pointed out that this is not a SPOS. It is not a special purpose that is a short term, like five to 10 years. It is 30 years. And also, it, um, it is ancient technology, buses, for heaven's sakes. There are better solutions for the less than 1% of the community that need transportation. And that would be things like Rideshare, like Uber, that's already in existence without you throwing our $11 billion in tax dollars away. And it's further, the project list can change because of ATL. Read the legislation. County, the county has been ignoring citizens. And I'm using the, the Lower Roswell Road Project as an example, where consultants hired by, hired by the county actually lied to other business owners saying that certain business owners supported it. And we presented that evidence to the county and nothing was done. It's gone forward like a bully, saying even though the majority of the community does not want it, okay? We're saying no to ADUs, we're saying no to secret meetings, we're saying no to MSPOS, and we're saying no to project lies, okay? Thank you. Good evening.
The next speaker is Mr. Sam Foster.
Hello, Sam Foster. Yeah, fun time before elections, about two weeks. It's been a fun period of time hearing people, uh, say very nice things about public transit. Especially determining what type of people, uh, should be riding the bus or like questioning if they look professional or not, which is interesting, to say the least. I've seen a lot of good things come from the majority on this board over the past year. I've, short time I've been involved in politics. I got started here because I, I wanted to start biking everywhere, cause I got tired of traffic. Uh, and I slowly, uh, went down the rabbit hole of local politics, which is very strange at times, but, uh, more effective than federal politics. My one vote for whoever I voted for is not gonna change the world. I'm excited for the future, no matter what happens this election, whoever is happy or sad after November 5th. And I want to see the good things from the majority on this board, and hopefully the rest of the board, uh, continue and to pass the election. Even if all of the things I want to happen, happen, we still have work to do. We still have people who don't have adequate access to transportation. We still have people who don't have adequate, uh, access to housing, which I'll loop back around to for a second later. And we still don't have safe streets for people to bike and walk on. And we need to address those issues, no matter what happens. Though, these are core fundamental issues that a municipality has to deal with. And we're going to have to continue to work together as a community to find solutions to these issues. Because they're not gonna go away whether something passes or fails. Looping back to housing, uh, me being naive, I thought ADUs would be really uncontroversial, considering the incremental scale, uh, that, that they're going to be built out on, but, uh, I was wrong. Um, what we're talking about here is the smallest, the absolute smallest, smaller than single-family housing, building out new homes. The smallest amount of development you can possibly do to add to a new neighborhood. The smallest I can even think of. And this idea that it's gonna cause, uh, transancy with students or it's gonna turn a community into a rental community, it, it's nonsense. These are homes that we are allowing the, the homeowners of that property to build on their land. Uh, and it's going to allow people, uh, people like students and people like, uh, older family members to live with their families for a longer period of time instead of having to be sent to, uh, uh, an elder home, uh, in the later points of their life, because their family doesn't have the resources to take care of them. So, this is a positive change for the community. And I feel like just because it comes from one side, we're all fighting against it, even though it is the literal smallest form of change you can make to a neighborhood. And it fits the character of the neighborhood. Uh, that's it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Matthew Tussaroni.
Chairwoman Cupid and members of the board, my name is Matthew Tussaroni. And I wanted to first off, uh, thank you for your time and the continued leadership of this county. Me and my wife have been happy to live here for almost 10 years. I wanna say that I am wholeheartedly in support of MSPOS for the better buses, more trails and sidewalks, and for the paratransit and the, uh, microtransit. The documentation on the website is incredibly helpful and very detailed and breaks down everything in a really easy to understand manner. And the questions that I did have, I was able to, uh, email the, uh, email provided and I got it answered pretty quickly, so, big, big shout for that. I live off Patterson Street in District 1, and I work at a lot of different locations throughout the county. Most of these I can currently access through Cobb Link as it exists today, but in most cases, it would take me at least three times longer than it would take for me to just drive. So because of that, I drive and contribute to the traffic issues. So, with this proposed road, the proposed routes in MSPOS, it would make it not only the same time, but in some cases, it could potentially be faster with the dedicated lanes. And that's just one thing. The trails near my house are amazing for getting around on bikes. And having more of those in other parts of the county will be a huge boon to help with the, the growing population in Cobb. And the microtransit is going to be a great way to help out people in the more rural parts of the county that can get left out whenever it comes to the bus schedules, uh, as well as the paratransit to help those that can definitely get completely left behind. There's so much that this will do for everyone in the county to help in, uh, accommodate this incredible growth that we're going through. And for all those reasons, I support MSPOS and look forward to Cobb's bright future. Thank you so much for your time.
The next speaker is Mr. Donald Barth.
Donald Barth, good evening ladies. Got three minutes, let's get on the roll. One of the biggest problems that I have seen with MSPOS is Chairwoman Cupid. You have been less than ethical. Less than. In fact, you rely to get your way. The man came up here for the project and said he could see signs up that the county is supporting. The lies we've heard over the whole thing have just been one on top of the other. But that's, that's standard par for the course. Hopefully, I won't have to ever hear it again after January the 1st. But until then, whatever happens, we still have a county to run. Now, I take any one of you and dare you to come over into District 2, the true District 2. While you were playing your games, Ms. Chairwoman, games that violated the Constitution of Georgia, violated your oath. District 2 fell apart. I want y'all to come over there and see houses with quarter acre houses loaded with cars. And ADU is not the end of the world. It cannot be governed by y'all. It just cannot be. We have ADUs in Marietta. Constantly, I see ADUs in the abuses or the good parts of ADUs. So I'm not against an ADU, I'm against the person that's forcing it onto people, because you're unethical. You're not transparent. Just a minute ago, did you hear the background? No? No, you didn't, because you're just not able to be a fair person. Was there some background noise over here? Well, hell yeah, there was. Did you tuck your head down and not listen? Well, hell yeah, you did. You just don't have it, lady. I don't know what else to say, except for we have gone through three-plus years and you just never had it. You tried, you failed. I'm hoping that the people will listen. MSPOS, it was a failure just because of you. It's not a big deal. Again, Sam thinks we're against people for riding the bus. There's nobody doing that. Occasionally, you'll get somebody, you'll get somebody that says stupid stuff. You'll get somebody that yells out stupid stuff in a meeting. It doesn't mean we all do it.
Mr. Barth, your time has run. And the last speaker for the evening is Ms. Leslie Davis.
Leslie Davis, I am here to speak against the proposed code amendments regarding accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. First, I would like to point out that over the last four years, I've emailed the board about various concerns and two board members always reply. Yet, the first time I have received a reply from the Chair of this board is right in the heat of her reelection bid. Convenient. To address something that the Chair wrote in her emailed reply, quote, "ADUs however, are one option of many in addressing housing affordability." It is laughable to think that the majority of this board cares whatsoever about housing affordability, when for the last four years, we've been coming before you to plead for you to get your budget under control and stop voting to raise the mileage rate above the tax neutral rate to no avail. You know this raises the cost of housing on the renters of Cobb County, yet you don't care, because you know they aren't paying attention and they will just blame their greedy landlords. We also know that some of you are not through with the idea of a stormwater tax. With these proposed ADUs, that's 850 square feet more of impervious surfaces to tax. And with the required minimum one parking area per ADU, that's even more impervious surface to tax. The county will surely consider an ADU to be a property improvement and will therefore increase the assessed value, leading to higher tax revenue. Another win for big spenders in our government. One of my biggest concerns is that if approved, then, under the radar, future changes will be made. Would there be an increase in the number of ADUs allowed per lot? Or additional street parking allowed? Would the requirement that the property owner must reside in the ADU or main structure be removed? Opening the floodgates for big investors to take over? Even under the current proposal, where's the manpower come from to enforce things like street parking for only one car? We already don't have enough manpower from code enforcement to help with things that have come up in my neighborhood, like six to 10 cars filling up a single driveway spilling out on the street, causing hazards to drivers and pedestrians alike. Or when a big investor left a huge tree downed on top of a rental property for months on end until squeaky wheels in our neighborhood could get anything done about it. So I say no to ADUs.
That was the last speaker, thank you.
Thank you. That now takes us to the Commissioner's public address.
Thank you. And while my videos are getting keyed up, um, since we're talking about transparency and truth and everything with the MSPOS, um, a lot has been said about sidewalks and trails. It is very clear in the language for the MSPOS that it is only within a quarter mile of a proposed transit service. So the, the thought and the impression that many are giving that this MSPOS is going to build additional trails and sidewalks is not the case, if you look at the details of the language. With that being said, get ready for a fun time at Cobb Parks Fall Festival of Fun from 5:00 to 9:00 PM on Saturday, October 26th. You can bark on a whimsical hayride and solve the mystery as you meet delightful characters along the way. Looking for a scare, you can visit Cobb Parks Haunted House, experience a terrifying nightmare maze that will leave you trembling. The Haunted House is open from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, Wednesday through Saturday, October 23rd through 26th. And again, we've got the Great Pumpkin Contest, and it will be ending soon. You can pick your favorite pumpkin or Halloween design created by our various Cobb County departments. Voting is open through Thursday, October 31st, and the winner will be announced at the Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, no, it's actually Wednesday, November 12th. All proceeds will go to Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center, supporting their mission to create a community free from child abuse. You can scan the QR code to cash your vote and click Donate in the top right corner, enter your information and the amount you wish to donate. Each dollar counts as one vote. And lastly, Halloween is the perfect time to say, "Until death do us part." You can join Cobb Magistrate Court for a free group wedding ceremony at noon on Thursday, October 31st, at 32 Waddell Street Southeast in Marietta. Costumes are welcome and no appointment is needed. Just bring your boo and marriage licenses issued by any probate court and head to the Cobb Magistrate Court. And lastly, we wish you a happy and safe Halloween.
Thank you. We will now go on to Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. Congratulations to our Cobb Parks and Debbie Parish. They were awarded, Cobb Parks was named the Agency of the Year for 2024. Is Michael Brantley still here? Where is he? Congratulations, Michael. And also, the distinction was best- Yeah, let's go. The distinction was bestowed upon this amazing department for contributions, community engagement, events, and more. Special mention to Debbie Parish, who was named Outstanding Programmer for Contributions to Therapeutic Recreation Services. Michael does and his staff do an excellent job. They partner with all the other departments. You always see Parks and Rec going above and beyond. KCB has some recycling and medication takeback days coming up. You can dispose of medications safely from 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, October 26th, at three locations. Police Precinct 1 on Cobb Parkway, Kennesaw, the Tim DeLee Senior Center on Sandy Plains Road, and the Freeman Pool Senior Center, um, on South Hurt Road in Smyrna. Also, the Fall Community Recycling Event, um, is coming back due to public demand. We're finding ways to continue to provide recycling services to our community. The next community recycling event will be at 9:00 AM from, will be from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Saturday, November 9th, at Jim Miller Park in the Callaway Road Parking Lot. So go to the website, cobbcounty.org/keepcobbbeautiful/events for details on what will be accepted. And then, um, on November 1st, Friday, November 1st, at Cobb Civic Center from 9:00 to 5:00, will be the Third Annual Veterans We Care Fair. There are, I think, over 100 veterans that will be, uh, I mean, vendors that will be there to assist veterans with benefits, housing, everything they need. So be sure and stop by. Um, also, on November 9th, Saturday, November 9th, at Atlanta Country Club, uh, Cobb Library Foundation is having their annual fundraiser. And, um, it's always a good time. So help support the Cobb Libraries, purchase your tickets or sponsorships, or make a donation, cobblibraryfoundation.org. And everybody have a safe and happy Halloween.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're now at Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. District 4 News and Updates. Join me and Planning Commissioner Michael Hughes for October's In-the-Zone Community Meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Our monthly virtual meetings are a great way to learn about recent zoning decisions and upcoming zoning applications in District 4. 12 applications are currently to be heard, are in November. Please email rwanda.mccintosh@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. Get ready for a spectacular fun night with the Word of Faith family at their annual trunk retreat event. Join them on Thursday, October 31st, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Riverside Epicenter, located at 135 Riverside Parkway in Mabelton. This exciting evening will be packed with creatively decorated trunks and delightful treats for all ages. Come ready for some Halloween fun. I am excited to share that District 4 made history on October 2nd with the opening of Florin Decor's first store in South Cobb. The new store located at 1355 East West Connector in Austell/Mabelton brings high-quality products and services to our community. It also reflects our vision of smart, sustainable, and community-centered development. Florin Decor's presence will enhance our local economy and the lives of our residents by creating valuable job opportunities in South Cobb. As we continue to grow, we must attract businesses that share our commitment to long-term community success. And Florin Decor is a perfect partner in that journey. The Heritage Hill Shopping Center redevelopment is on track and advancing according to plan. The Agave Cantina will open its doors in November and Olive Garden in December. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield, and thank you all of you for being here this evening. This is our final meeting before elections and want to encourage you that if you have not, to please go out and vote to vote, um, the full ballot. Certainly, at the top of the elections are the federal races, but down ballot are the more local races, and there are referendum questions at the end. And encourage our residents to take full, uh, opportunity to participate on the full ballot. Today, we've been talking about a number or listening to a number of, um, concerns and issues before our citizens here. And I had a eureka moment listening to Mr. Foster speaking about, um, housing and ADUs. And I just wanna emphasize again that this is a permit that can be requested. And if it's not good for Cobb, and if your neighbors don't want it, you won't see it, because they won't request it. This is not coming to your community if you don't want it. But what may happen is you might find that this is desirable by people that live near you. And that's the only reason you would see it. And if we're not listening to you, but yet there's a neighbor near you that wants it, it might be that you're not speaking for all of your neighbors. This might actually be desired by someone near you. This might actually be desired by someone near you. So we are considering what is an option for people in our county to consider. I don't know if it will move forward, but I do know if it moves forward and should you actually see it. It is because those that are in disagreement may not be fully aligned with those that they may perceive they're speaking for. I also know that the EMSBLOS is on the ballot. I encourage you, whether or not you agree or disagree, to please not do a disservice of misinforming people about what it is. Again, I've heard referred to that we do have a website that addresses what the EMSBLOS is, and just encourage people to at least make a decision based on fact. I've heard some things shared which are not necessarily fact. I will share that sidewalks and trails are included in the EMSBLOS, but there are several miles of sidewalks and trails that can be considered. Our SBOs program generally facilitates a building of anywhere between five and 15 miles of sidewalk for a six-year SBOs program. Should trails and sidewalks be built near where there are transit facilities, you're talking about transformationally hundreds of miles of sidewalks. So I don't want to misinform people that there would be a quarter-mile of sidewalk that's not necessarily the case, or less sidewalks. There would be much more than what we've been able to build over our last SBOs programs. Again, just want to encourage people, please, go online, look at what the projects are, look at how not only they are articulated, but look at how they are depicted on the map that's there, and I would encourage you to make that decision for yourself, but to make a truth-informed decision. With that, thank you. Again, please go out and vote, and look forward to seeing you at our next meeting in November.